Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none. We move to the...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Move to approve. A motion to move, a motion that's been made to approve?
Second.
I'll second that.
And seconded?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to pull the municipal utilities minutes from April 25th.
Okay, we will pull the minutes from municipal utilities from April 25th. With the consent, the other consent items, a motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Discussion on the municipal...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk a little bit about, it's under Resolution 16, and they've got a number of things they were talking about, but the final one, just above Resolution 17, they talk about travel expenses and meal allowances. And they're recommending, they've got two allowances, one is for in-state and one is for out-of-state. Presently, their in-state allowance for meals is forty dollars a day, and they're looking to move that to seventy. The out-of-state is presently fifty, and they're looking to move that to a hundred. And that is for employees only. The commissioners are gonna talk about it at some point in time if they should have those same arrangements, but to me, that seems excessive. And there's probably no one here from the utilities to talk about that. I'd like, I know that our city policy is seven dollars for breakfast and nine for lunch and fourteen for supper, something like, it's about thirty dollars a day, in-state or out-of-state, unless it's, maybe if you're going to Washington DC, there might be some flexibility, but this is certainly a great difference from what we see on the city side of things. And I would like to have the commission maybe come to a labor committee meeting and just explain to us why they think that would be appropriate. So, if it's all right, I would move to refer this to our labor committee.
Second.
And then I would move to approve the rest of the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, under your current motion, all of the minutes would be approved. If it's your intent to table and refer and have the labor relations committee look at it, then you should table the Resolution Number 17, and then you can approve the balance of the minutes.
Is that, we're looking at two motions then? So, I first of all, I have to rescind the motion that I made to refer it to labor.
If that's your intent.
That is my intent. And then the second has to rescind.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. So now, we need to...
Move to table Resolution 16.
Move to table Resolution 16.
Seventeen.
Seventeen, you're right.
Yeah, seventeen.
Seventeen. Move to table Resolution 17.
Second.
Okay. And then we'll vote on that, and then I'll move to approve the rest of the minutes.
That would be a resolution, Mick?
No, it's a simple motion to table. You vote on that, and then follow up with the motion for the minutes.
A motion has been made to, seconded, to table Resolution 17. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say no. That motion carries.
Then I would move to approve the balance of the utilities commission minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to balance the, to file the rest of the municipal utilities minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. This time, I'd like to open the hearings, hearing for the improvement hearing for the Nineteenth Street Southwest. Holly, would you explain that to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the audience and watching public. This will be a short public hearing for Nineteenth Street Northwest. And there were handouts available as you walked in the council chambers. This is the position statement for the City of Wilmer to seek the input of all interested citizens and affected members of the public in the city's decision-making process. The reason we are doing the Nineteenth Street Northwest public hearing separate from our street improvement project is this street was added at a later date due to recent notice of frost boils on the street. Purpose of the hearing is to review and explain the proposed improvements and estimated cost, and to obtain input from all parties. Here's the schedule of the hearing. After I give the quick explanation, there'll be time for public comments, and then the hearing would be closed. Quickly, this is a map of where Nineteenth Street is located. It is just north of Gorton Avenue. Picture of the condition of the street.
It's terrible.
And this is about .8 miles length. Currently, it had three inches of bituminous and four inches of aggregate underneath the street. We are proposing reconstruction of the street rather than going through and fixing each and every frost boil. I think it would end up being the whole street anyway, so we are just gonna do the whole reconstruction, which should include replacing some water main, adding a catch basin, repairing curb and gutter as needed. Just to note is, the sanitary and sewer were installed on this street in 1975, and the services were installed in 1977. So the street is quite old. The proposed schedule is, we are having the improvement hearing tonight. We hope to do a bid letting potentially in mid-May. Then we would have the assessment hearing, award the bid, and begin construction in July and end the construction in November, similar to the schedule for our 2011 street improvement program. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
It is open to the public for questions. If you have any questions or comments. Could you state your name and address, please?
Odie Hendrickson. I'm on Nineteenth Street, last house down. There's a cul-de-sac there that's probably too small, but I'm wondering if we could check and see if part of that cul-de-sac, or it could be paved. It would stand up a lot better. They've come and patched it every year, and so there's some things, I guess I'd like to ask and have done, if possible, or what additional charge would be, or if they're gonna put plastic down before the tar to hold, which I did at the store on 12, Highway 12, and it stands up a lot better.
I'm gonna ask Holly to answer that for you, if I may.
Typically, when we do the street reconstruction, we would do the whole street, and then...
I can hear you.
We would do the, we would include geotextile fabric for part of our reconstruction on this street, which would help prolong the length, the life of the street. And we also would be including a heavier base, which is ten inches of gravel and four inches of bituminous, so it would be a thicker section.
Because all the, the city trucks turn around, and they have quite a times. You know, they're back and back and forth, and, I mean, I understand that, because our cul-de-sac is probably smaller than most, so I would just like that to be brought into consideration when you do spend money to fix it. Otherwise, I guess that's about the only thing I have. Is that it?
Thank you very much.
My name is Randy Frederickson. I'm 416 Nineteenth Street Northwest. First, I'd like to thank Public Works City Engineers Office in the City of Wilmer for being so proactive with respect to this issue we need to fix this year, and we weren't on the schedule to have it done, so I'm thankful that instead of spending money twice, we can only spend it once. That's very prudent. Actually, my questions or comments aren't maybe specifically to the plan, but is there gonna be some type of temporary fix between now and then? It's really in tough shape right now. You can barely get through to the far end, and I guess I'd like to think something would be done between now and then, so we could get a fire truck or emergency vehicle or something like that to handle the cul-de-sac. And then, more of a comment, but the problem got, went from bad to worse in a day, and people created the problem by exercising poor judgment. And I guess I would like to think that perhaps something could be done, so in the future, other residents won't have to deal with a situation like we had to deal with, where a truck got stuck and another truck came in to get them out, and it made things much worse than it was, and then another truck came in to get another truck out, and I just think that, and then the fix was putting flags up and no parking signs, and again, I'm just thinking that we could have been, something perhaps could have and still should be done, so the situation isn't exacerbated even worse than what it is right now.
Thank you. Would you care to comment on that, Holly?
Well, as far as trucks, or garbage trucks, or those types of vehicles going down the street, you know, there will be a letter sent out to those companies and reminding them of road restrictions and to be cautious of frost boils in the streets. As far as a temporary fix, there are no current plans to do a temporary fix. We're hoping to try and speed this process along a little bit, so we can get the reconstruction done and not spend money on repairing a road that's gonna be tore up in a month or two.
So we can't even get the frost hews out of there by running a roller across there or something, right now? I mean, to me, that's really inexpensive.
Well, I can have Public Works take a look at it, but I think that if, I can have them take a look at it and see if there's something that they can do that's not gonna cost a lot of money to the city.
Absolutely. And again, Holly and the city has been extremely receptive to our needs, and I thank everybody for that.
Thank you for coming in. Any other questions or comments? At this point, I'll close the public hearing. Oh, wait, one here. I'm sorry, go ahead. Still open.
Yeah, I'm Earl Hippler from 404 Nineteenth Street, Northwest.
Thank you.
And this is pertaining to salt of Gorton. West Central Steel has got a mud hole there, and they run trucks in and out there twenty-four hours a day dragging mud out in the street, and it's up, and it all poses a nineteen street to restore it. Can you make them pave that lot? It should be done.
Make them pave the lot?
Pave the lot, like William did on his lots. He's gonna pave it.
I'm gonna address that to Holly as well, because I don't know.
Because I'm sure they can afford it.
We'll have to take a look at that, Mr. Mayor, it's...
Okay. They will take a look at it, and someone will get back to you.
We put up there for fourteen years, and it could be a residential area, but they invaded it in an industrial area out of it, and it's not a mud hole.
Thank you for coming in and sharing that with us, and we'll have somebody get back to you. Any other questions or comments? At this point, I will close the public hearing portion of this and open it up to the council. Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Holly, I want to echo what Mr. Frederickson said. That street, I don't know how they would get a fire truck down that, down that street if the need came up, because you're dodging cones, and at the end, it's a terrible mess. I don't know if we could just run a grader down there or something, but they're living with an untenable situation, I think.
Yeah, so we can, we can take a look at it, see what we can do.
Please do, thank you.
Councilman Ammon?
I just, I just got a question. Mr. Hendrickson mentioned the cul-de-sac. Aren't we doing it all the way through?
Yes.
Yes, we are. It includes the entire, the entire street.
That's what I had understood, too. Maybe Mr. Hendrickson didn't understand that.
No, he's complaining about the small radius.
I just meant that it breaks up pumps every year, right around the end, and just because the tar hasn't been thick enough for whatever.
Yeah, but it'll all...
I just thought if we use seventy-five feet of that for cement, it won't happen again. But every year, we patch, and they, and it's because of the big rigs. I mean, they gotta clean it. I'm not saying it's never, but I'm thinking of something that would be better for the cul-de-sac, for the big rig.
Okay. Councilman DeBlick?
I guess, question on the cul-de-sac, is it the problem of the radius, the size of the cul-de-sac, or is it the material that is, that is there, that it breaks up quicker than the other?
Well, they probably have backup and forward twice, six times, and springs in the block, and they just can't, they just can't go up to turn around. They gotta go up back and forth and back and forth, so that, weighted that truck, it's quite a bit, because most cul-de-sacs is probably again, big, so then they can make...
Mr. Mayor, we can't record the comments unless people are speaking into the microphone.
Okay. Are there any other...
I think Holly wants to say something.
Comments?
If I could say one thing on that, I don't know that we could increase the radius of that cul-de-sac, because that would require getting additional property from the property owners. I, so...
Councilman Ammon?
Well, just a comment, we've been, talked about it at Public Works, asphalt versus concrete. In this case, if they're willing to pay the extra money, there's indications that concrete may be, in the long run, a cost saver for the consumer versus asphalt, dealing with the amount of repairs that are needed. This could be a place where we can maybe get an option on that, in that cul-de-sac area, if they're, if they're willing to consider it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, because we don't know that everybody would be in favor of paying more for the project. There are a limited number of property owners along the route, and so the, that's gonna have an impact on the amount of the assessments, and we, of course, won't be able to determine that until we get bids in on the project and figure something out. In terms of concrete, you know, you may very well be right, and it might make some sense to do it, but when we talk about doing research and using concrete as an alternative, I guess our preference and thought process has always been to do that in a high-traffic area, one that we can measure the results of a period of time with a high volume of traffic and make better judgments that way. I suspect on a short cul-de-sac like we're talking about here, traffic would be limited, maybe with the exception of the trucks, the truck issue and the weight issue, but as Ms. Wilson pointed out in her opening remarks, there was a limited amount of base and a limited amount of asphalt installed when the street was first constructed, and we would be designing and building it to a different standard today.
What would, excuse me, Holly, what would we have for the rating or classifications of that road with thicker bituminous versus what we have now? Just curious.
Nine ton.
Nine ton would be the new road?
Yep.
And what do we have now? Five?
Less than five.
Or less?
Yes. We only have four...
Originally, it was designed for a four or five load?
We only have four inches of gravel. Well, we had, when it was designed, it was four inches of gravel, three inches of base. We would be putting in ten inches of gravel and six inches of asphalt, or, I'm sorry, four inches of asphalt and ten inches of base, so quite a bit thicker of a section.
Okay, thank you.
Kevin, I have a question. Obviously, this gentleman would like to speak, but the public hearing portion of this has been closed. Is there anything that I need to know about this?
Well, that's always at your discretion, because the public hearing is closed, but if you want to comment, answer questions, you have that discretion.
Did you have a question or a comment?
Well, I was just gonna say, in this letter I got, it said it was only gonna be four inches, four inches of gravel, so she said now it's gonna be ten, so that might be better. So, and then, I probably own eighty percent of that cul-de-sac, so if anybody gets stuck, it's gonna be you.
Any other comments from the council? Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a suggestion, maybe to, if we're gonna asphalt it, maybe, Holly, look into your ten inches of gravel on top of, I don't know, four, six inches of foam or something, and see, or investigate that at least. I think it's worth trying somewhere, because I know that the frost boils ruins these roads also. I mean, I don't know what's below it, if it's clay or wet clay, or, but that has something to do with them cracking up and, because those garbage trucks that fell through out there, something had to be awful soft below it, awful soft, and that was caused by probably freezing and thawing out, so. Anyway, I think it's worth looking at. That's just a comment. Thank you.
Do you have a resolution?
Not yet.
I'll introduce a resolution ordering the improvements and direct the, prepare the plans and specifications.
Second. Motion has been made, offering resolution ordering improvements and direction, directing preparation of plans and specifications. Any further discussion? Roll call. Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Ammon?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dacken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. Resolution passes. At this point, I think we'll go into item number eight on our agenda, stormwater management report from fire engineering. Mr. Stephen Klein?
Yes, I'm Steve Klein, and I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about the plan that your staff and we have been working on for some time. I've been given about thirty minutes or so for a presentation, and then some questions afterwards, time for that, and I will try to adhere to that as much as possible. There is a fair amount of information to be provided, but before I talk about it, I just want to let you know that a lot of the flooding problems and issues that you've faced are very complex, and what we, what I will describe, there is no real easy silver bullet fix to some of these issues, especially in the southeast quadrant, and so I'm not here to be the bearer of all sorts of good news, but we do have a plan that will help you through this and improve on the situation dramatically. There we go, okay. I'm going to be speaking from a PowerPoint, and as I understand, the public that may be seeing this won't be able to see my red laser, so I will do my best to try to describe what I'm pointing at for the public that may be viewing on this presentation as well. Our surface water management plan covers the entire city, but there is a major focus of the plan towards the southeast quadrant of town because of the existing problems and the built-out nature of the, of that whole region. Quite understand what, okay. As I mentioned, the plan covers the entire city. It addresses water quantity issues, the capacity and flooding issues, as well as water quality, with a major focus on the southeast quadrant. I'm gonna focus most of my discussion tonight on the water quantity issues, but I will touch briefly on water quality at the end of my presentation. This is simply an aerial photo of the city and the drainage area, both upstream and downstream of town. The areas that are bracketed in red hatching are the city boundaries. Foot Lake, the Foot Lake chain of lakes is right in this location. The outlet of Foot Lake drains into a creek called Hawk Creek that discharges to the southwest and ultimately discharges into the Minnesota River. There's a, the southeast quadrant of town drains to the southeast through County Ditch 23A, discharging into the Lake Wakanda, Lake Candy Ohi chain, and then ultimately discharges into the Crow River and then into the Mississippi River. The primary of the focus of our plan is this greenish area here, which we call southeast Wilmer sub watershed. This is just a blow-up of that southeast quadrant, and the blue highlighting here is what tends to get flooded under a hundred-year event. The yellow stars are reported locations where there have been significant flooding problems. As you can see, this is not an isolated flooding problem, and as I will get into, a lot of these areas look like they may be an individual flooding problem, but because of the way they are interconnected by pipe, we'll have major chunks of these areas act more like one big lake as opposed to individual, isolated flooding areas. Historically, the city has been dealing with these through a variety of programmatic actions. The water quantity and water quality standards that you've established for new development and redevelopment by ordinance and policy has been working to at least not create a condition worse than presently existed before certain developments. The policies are to meet the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's standards for water quality, and you've tried to limit post-development discharge rates to existing conditions discharge rates for any developed or potentially development or redevelopment areas. And then, if there's any fill that's placed within a floodplain, that compensatory detention or additional excavation is required to make sure that there's no net filling within a floodplain. That's something that you've been operating under for the past ten years or thereabouts. The quantity of water that we're talking about, just for the southeast quadrant of town, is significant. To put it in perspective, for a hundred-year event, there's 337 acre-feet of water. That's the equivalent of, one foot of depth of water over 337 acres. It's a large amount of water. To put it in further perspective, you all know Swan Lake? That's the equivalent of eighteen inches of water on Swan Lake. That's the equivalent of 18 inches of water on Swan Lake. The causes to your problem, especially in the southeast quadrant of town, are many, and they've all kind of interconnected to create, uh, a very complex and difficult problem to correct. First of all, you have very flat terrain. Second, uh, with each new development or each, uh, area of imperviousness, whether it's building, a road, uh, that increases the runoff to, uh, problematic areas. Also, that part of the city, a good portion of that, the storm sewers were built out at a time when there was less standards for storm sewers. Quite commonly for an older part of town like that, uh, many cities didn't even have a standard. What we have found for your particular storm sewers in that area is they range in, in a design size from maybe a one-year to maybe three-year event, for the most part, and traditional standards these days for cities is to try to improve their storm sewer systems to manage flows up through a 10-year event with their pipes. And then excess flows, for example, when you have 100-year event or something like that, they use the surface overflows, the streets and detention areas, to manage these excess flows. And what we have found is that the base storm sewers are significantly undersized compared to today's standards. That's not saying that they were designed or built wrong, they just were built in a different era. Also, there are few flood detention areas that were designed in that area. There are, um, a few ponding areas, but not very many. We also know that you have very tight soils. It's very clayey in nature for most of that whole terrain. There's also a high groundwater table that doesn't, even if the soils weren't clayey, there is not a very strong infiltration capability because, uh, the soils are so tight and then the high, high groundwater is causing a problem in that ra, area. In addition, there's what we call a tailwater effect. And I, I just wanted, uh, through this next slide, show you what I'm talking about. This is simply a cross-section from the city. Uh, the city would be on the far right of this drawing, and Lake Wakanda, the outlet of Lake Wakanda, is on the far left of this drawing. The bottom line that I'm showing here, that's kind of this jagged, up and down sort of roller-coastery line, that is largely the ditch system that drains to Lake Wakanda. Lake Wakanda is this, uh, this sort of dish here, area here on the left. The rest of this is all County Ditch 23, uh, and this is roughly where the box culverts, uh, go through, um, Highway 71 bypass. The point that I want to make is, is that the outlet of Lake Wakanda is established at an elevation of about 11,04.7. And this blue line shows what that means to the system. There is water that backs up from, and pools on a regular basis because the outlet sets the elevation of the water. All the way from Lake Wakanda, five miles upstream, all the way into the city through the culverts. That, and, and so hydraulically, that presents a little bit of a problem, because when you want to try to drive water or have it drain someplace, it has to overcome the force of water that isn't wanting to move there. It's gotta move that, and it's called a tailwater effect. So, um, that is an existing condition that, uh, is fairly significant. And all of these components have combined to cause some fairly significant flooding problems. To give you sort of a simplistic idea of what we're talking about here, uh, I like to describe sort of a, a beaker setup. In the, in the green here, that, that's kind of indicative of, uh, of the terrain of the land, and the white lines here are, uh, roadways or roadway intersections. And most of the, these intersections, or a lot of these intersections are being flooded. Under non-rainfall conditions, there's nothing standing, there's no water really standing in, uh, these streets. And so, there's no water in these beakers. But when, um, when a storm hits, water runs off the streets to intersections and starts filling up, uh, the intersection with water. And what's important here to note is that each of these intersections are interconnected by pipe that make each one of these ponding areas or beakers act as if it's one large beaker. In other words, all of these areas act as essentially one large lake in a lot of cases. So, one way to try to lower, uh, flooding in any intersection area would be to add maybe an additional storage area in an area that isn't, uh, currently developed, such as, uh, you know, depicted by adding an additional beaker here. And that does enable water to be, uh, reduced in terms of flooding, but it's reduced uniformly over all of these interconnecting, uh, inundation areas. And so, even putting one in close proximity to one intersection doesn't mean that it's going to have a dramatic impact on that intersection, because we have all of these other, uh, inundation areas that are all in, interconnected and acting as a single, sort of a basin. And so, one way to, to deal with that is to simply provide some additional pipe capacity and drain those areas, those intersections or beakers, down to another intersection. And what we have found is, is that, if, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more in just a minute, but what we've found is, is that's just chasing water to another location where there's existing problems, and it's making certain problem areas worse because we would increase the pipe size. So, another option would be to increase the pipe size and to provide additional detention wherever possible, and that does, uh, tend to mitigate some of the flooding in certain intersections, but we still run, uh, a situation where we increase flooding elsewhere and basically just push the problem a little bit further downstream rather than solving it. So, in order to, um, understand that and model it and determine what needs to be done, we can't use very simplistic tools. We have to use a very complex computer model, uh, and what we chose to use here is one that was developed by the Environmental Protection Agency. It's called XP Swim. And it has the ability to model all sorts of interesting dynamics, like water flowing in different directions at any particular time of a storm. For example, we know that, uh, the ditch system downstream of, uh, the city actually backs up into the city. There's water that comes at certain times of a storm into the city from that ditch system, and then it drains back down towards, uh, Wakanda at other times. Uh, you need to have a very complex model that does understand and how, and knows how to model those sorts of things. So, we build that model, uh, based on all sorts of input parameters, such as the land use and topography and, well, subwatersheds, et cetera, and we build it, and we determined, that we need to try to, uh, calibrate it or make it, make sure that it's accurately representing the city. Uh, and what we did is we validated that model using the August 25th, 2005 storm, because there were several pieces of information that were available. One, it was a fairly large storm to begin with, but there was aerial photography during and right after that storm where we, uh, had visible, uh, reference of where water was, had ponded at certain timestamps during that storm. Plus, there was really good NEXRAD data. When you talk, when you hear the, uh, weather reporters talk about NEXRAD, we as hydrologists use that information to determine rainfall intensity and incorporate that into our modeling. And we did that for that particular storm, and we validated that the model really was replicating what would happen for that storm, and then, based on that, we identified that we could use that model to really accurately determine what we could do to try to, to, minimize or mitigate the flooding that you are having occur. And just, so you know, one small area that we, we validated the model was for the 10th and Candy Ojai area, where our model predicted the, the peak flood level for that storm within an inch of what was actually, uh, surveyed by your surveyors. So, once we had that model, uh, developed, we started looking at some alternatives of what could be done, possible, uh, things that has been done in other cities, uh, throughout the state, to try to mitigate similar sorts of problems. And the first thing we tried to look for is where can we provide, uh, onsite stormwater detention in areas that are currently undeveloped? And, um, the only areas, there are very few open areas, uh, within the southeast quadrant of, of town, um, that are open, um, and, you know, could possibly be utilized for stormwater detention. The logical ones include the Kennedy School area, some of the ballfields there, uh, the area west of Menards to the, to the south, the Ramblewood Slough, uh, the former wastewater treatment plant site, the Garfield School, uh, play area as well. And in looking at those, we would be looking at, at those as typically dry detention basins. These would not be basins that would, uh, hold, uh, standing water for any long period of time. They would drain and normally be dry. And then, we look at upsizing, uh, the storm sewers as well. So, the first two alternatives we, we looked at, the first alternative was to just simply provide some additional, uh, stormwater detention, and that's depicted by the red sort of cross hatches here in these locations. Uh, this is the old, former wastewater treatment plant site, uh, the rough size of that, the Ramblewood Slough, the area just east of Menards, uh, Kennedy School, and the Garfield School way up to the, to the north. And again, all of these yellow sort of stars are indicative of, uh, where problematic areas have been, uh, noted in flooding and have been verified by the model. And by providing some of these detention areas, we are actually able to reduce the amount of blue blotches, and you can see that in some cases, we've removed the flooding in and around some of these yellow, uh, stars, but certainly not very much. So, the next option was to use those flooding areas, uh, wherever possible, and increase the trunk storm sewer system to represent more of a 10-year event instead of a one-to-three year event that you have right now. And that, uh, created more, uh, air, that mitigated more of the flooding, but not a lot. There still was significant flooding, um, in the most problematic of the areas. And, some of the problems that we had was the, the areas where there are no, where there, there were no development or was open land, those locations weren't in ideal places to be strategically placing ponding for, uh, stormwater detention. And so, they have semi-limited impact, um, and without upsizing the trunk storm sewers, we weren't gonna get much in the way of, uh, benefit from either of those two approaches on themselves. So, we, we had to look further, and we looked at five other alternatives that I'm gonna briefly go through here, uh, that build on the two that I just talked about, where we were just simply utilizing available storage and upsizing the pipes. The first one is to build, instead of 10-year pipes in this red area, those in the previous slide were 10-year, we took a look at what would happen if we built those out at 100-year pipe size, just build pipes big enough to take the water. And we found that we could really reduce the flooding dramatically in this upper, uh, region of the southeast quadrant. But, uh, that comes with all sorts of problems, uh, not the least of which is the constructability. When we're talking about these types of pipe, we're talking very large pipe, the equivalent of two 12-foot by 12-foot box culverts going down the streets. And to try to put that in a road where you already have su, sanitary sewer, water, other utilities, becomes a, a, a construction nightmare and very costly. But we needed to be able to identify what needs, needed to be done in order to alleviate those sorts of flooding problems. So, the next alternative was to put in those 100-year pipes and try to maximize as much storage as we could, uh, down just, uh, to the west of Menards in this reddish sort of cross-hatched area here. And that was alternative number four. Alternative number five was to do something similar, but instead of placing detention west of Menards, we looked at increasing the pipe size through the highway bypass, Highway 71 bypass, and creating additional detention in the area in the south portion of the Grass Lake area. Alternative number six was to use those large diameter pipes and incorporate detention in the Menard area west of Menards, as well as detention, uh, in the Grass Lake area as well. And we, we ran a lot of costs on what those alternatives, alternatives would run, and it became very clear that even if you could construct it, the cost is going to be very prohibitive, we believe. So, we looked at an alternative number seven, which backs us up a little bit, and we said, okay, what can we do to try to mitigate and really, uh, make the flooding more of a nuisance than a super problem area, uh, and live with more pipe sizes that are more consistent with traditional municipal standards being more like 10-year events? So, we went back and said, let's see if we can maximize flooding, flood detention in the Ramblewood Slough and the Kennedy School area and the, uh, waste, former wastewater treatment plant site and the area just west of Menards. And we found that this particular option could have fairly significant impact in the uppermost re, region where you've really had the most, uh, public, uh, outcry and where there's been the biggest problems with flooding. The advantage of alternate number seven is, uh, we can maximize flood detention in selected areas. We can use smaller pipes than alternatives three and, three through six. Uh, we improve the flooding in the four most targeted problematic flooding areas, and if we do that, we don't increase the flooding on Lake Wakanda as well. Uh, and there's few, fewer constructability considerations. To show you what that means for alternative number seven, this is just generally the lay of the land, and the darker columns is what is flooded at various intersections. On the far left, this would be the flooding at 10th and Candy Ojai, uh, and alternative number seven would reduce the 100-year flooding in that intersection by about 1.4 feet. At 8th and 15th Avenue, uh, that alternative would reduce the flooding, uh, to, uh, by about a foot. At 7th and 15th Street would reduce the flooding by about a foot, and at Robbins Avenue would reduce the flooding by about 1.2. And at Robbins Avenue would reduce the flooding by about 1.2 feet. The further downstream you go towards the wastewater treatment plant and on downstream, there would be very little impact from those alternatives, from alternative number seven. But, there would also be no impact on Lake Wakanda. And knowing that there is issues between the city and the landowners on Lake Wakanda, that was extremely important to make sure that whatever the city planned on doing or what they might do would not cause a problem for the Lake Wakanda Candy Ojai chain. To give you an idea of what sort of cost we're talking about, going from the least or lowest cost to some of the highest costs, alternative number one where we simply looked at trying to place detention in available open areas, the construction cost of something like that, and bear in mind, these are reconnaissance level costs, there would need to be a lot more engineering to give you a more accurate number on them. But, alternative number one would be $12.9 million. Alternative number two where we would be looking at installing some pipes and some ponds would be $37 million. And both alternative number one and number two would have very low impact on any of the flooding. Alternatives three through seven have moderate to high impact, but they come with fairly significant price tags. Alternative four, for example, $52 million. Alternative six where we're looking at 100-year pipes plus major detention both near, just west of Menards as well as in Grass Lake, that would come at a price tag of nearly $80 million, very, very significant. The alternative number seven, we believe of the pipe and ponding options that we've talked about here would be the most advisable and it has moderate impact on the flooding in the most problematic areas. So, none of these, we think, are going to be the clear focus. And there's additional, additional things that we're recommending the city do. There's nine specific recommendations that we have in our, our plan. Certainly, trying to develop stormwater detention wherever you possibly can is going to be important. And one of the most ideal locations for trying to maximize detention would be in the former wastewater treatment plant site. To the extent that you can maximize out every drop of water that you can place in there and detain water, we think is beneficial, not only from a flood control standard, but depending on how that's constructed, you could probably get significant water quality treatment that we'll talk about here in a minute and why that's so important. We also believe that you should be, as a next step in this, really do what we call as a flood risk assessment feasibility study where we're looking at a lot of additional things such as not so much ponds and pipes. We've got those costs prepared to compare to, but looking at other things such as floodproofing or perhaps even purchasing homes and moving them out, removing roadways, installing barricades at certain times during floods, other sorts of programmatic as well as less costly sorts of, of projects where we leave water where it's ponding, but remove the, perhaps homes or floodproof the homes so that people can live with that or move them out. And that's not something that we did as part of this study. This study was simply looking at the hydraulic and hydrologic nature of these areas. And so, we strongly recommend that you do a flood risk assessment where you understand what the cost of some of those things would be. In addition, we recommend that you formalize an emergency flood response plan where you identify who is responsible for barricading, what sort of notices you're giving the general public. All sorts of aspects would go into an emergency flood response plan and that you would try to formalize that and have your various departments review those requirements and responsibilities on an annual basis. In addition, we suggest that you review and revise your stormwater ordinances to be more representative of the types of requirements that you're going to place on development, both from a water quantity standpoint as well as a water quality standpoint. We recommend that you, at a minimum, upsize your storm sewer system where whenever you build out a road or plan new improvements to increase the storm sewer capacity to a 10-year event or 10-year level of service. We also, the last time Barr worked on your, your stormwater model was in 1998. We've just recently updated that. And there was a lot of development that occurred during that period of time of 10 to 11 years. It's very costly for the city to go back every five, 10, 15 years and update a model. And we think you should be doing that on an ongoing basis as new development or as new improvements are made. And as new development or new improvements are made to accommodate developers, the time to update your model would be at that point. And most cities that are doing this these days actually require the developer to pick up the cost to, to modify the computer model to incorporate those new pipes and ponds that they're placing in their development. And that, what that does is it also lightens the load of the, your general fund and your stormwater utility so that you don't have to necessarily use as much funds to keep that model current. We also think it's really important to enroll in the National Flood Insurance Program. That doesn't mean that you have to map out the entire floodplain within the city. It just means that you, this is a voluntary program for the city to do. And what it does do is it enables you as a city and your residences and your businesses to purchase flood insurance at a dramatically lower cost than anybody would be able to that isn't enrolled in a flood insurance program. In addition, by being enrolled in the flood insurance program and making sure that your ordinances are consistent with that and such, enables or postures the city to take advantage of, of flood damage reduction grants and perhaps some other grants that might be available to help you in, in funding the various improvements that you will try to do in a timely fashion over the next five to 10 years. The eighth item is we strongly recommend that you don't allow any filling or any net filling within a floodplain that's, that's been modeled by, by your current model. And to the extent possible, try to discourage development within any floodplain at all. Not only don't let them net fill it, but try not to let them disturb it in the first So, that's the hydraulic considerations, the pond and pipe options, sorts of things that we needed to talk about. And I want to talk just very briefly for a few minutes on water quality issues. And I don't know how much you're aware of what the Pollution Control Agency and what a lot of the forces are out there in terms of trying to improve the quality of our waters. But, you may have heard the term TMDLs or what are called Total Maximum Daily Load studies. These are studies that are being done when a lake or a stream has been declared or has been determined to be impaired for some sort of a pollutant, whether it's sediment or phosphorus or nitrogen, other sort of contaminants, turbidity, et cetera. Once they become impaired, then the state directs a TMDL study. And the study identifies what's causing the problem and what can be done to revert that water body, whether it's a lake or a stream, back to a standard that is acceptable. And the implementation of those plans, these TMDL plans are going to be very expensive to try to convert or revert a lake or a stream back to some standard that is much, much improved over what's there right now becomes very costly. So, what does that mean for the city? Well, the Lake Wakanda chain area has been identified as being impaired. The stream that drains to Lake Wakanda will, in all likelihood, be designated as impaired waters in the near future. And so, the city is going to be called upon by the Pollution Control Agency to do its part in that total watershed that drains to those areas to improve water quality. And where do you improve water quality? Well, in ponding basins for, for the most part. And if you don't have any ponding basins or areas to be doing water quality treatment, that means you may have to start removing certain developments and building ponds where you already have development, which is not going to be very palatable. And so, you do have a wonderful opportunity that I'm, I'm just kind of planting the seed here for you to be thinking about with Grass Lake. That area to the east of the highway bypass is a prime area that is not developed. There are no buildings there, there aren't no roads and improvement areas in that location. And the county, the city, and many other governmental agencies are looking at that area to be a major water, wetland area is one thing, but also to be utilized for water quality improvement. And we strongly suggest that the city do whatever it can to, to get on board with that because it'll cost you 20 times, studies show it, it's usually 15 to 20 times more costly to develop water quality treatment or flood detention in areas that are already developed as opposed to areas that are not. And so, from, from a water quality standpoint, from a flood control standpoint, Grass Lake is a prime opportunity for you that we think you should wrap your arms around. And with that, I think I will open the rest of what I have to say to answer your questions.
Don't run too far away. We will open up the, to the public for questions. If you have a question or a comment, please come up to the podium and state your name
Good evening, Council. I'm Joe Riddler. I'm on the Stormwater Task Force, co-chair of this. And thank you, Mr. Klein, for the presentation tonight. I've asked some of our DNR friends there in the audience tonight here too, to hear which we thought was going to be a little bit better report for the city, but kind of seems a little grim for what we have thrown in front of us. We have a lot of challenges in front of us. The one thing that, Steve, that, a question we have as a group, when you talk about the outlet on bypass 23 and 71, that's kind of where the MPCA has the line for us getting points for what we spend and, in our investment. And we're a little bit lost as a group. I know you do study and you're working on the, the other part of the watershed, the southeast part of the watershed. We're wondering, when you're telling us in the last part to grasp our arms around and we understand, you know, to slow the water flow down and get the filtration from the grass area. How do we, and that's why I have our friends with the DNR in here, how do we get together and get on the side of the MPCA so we can get some points for the money that we have to invest for the future of our city and work as a group in our watershed? Because this watershed is quite huge. It's not just the city of Wilmer. There's water coming from Candy, Ohio. There's water coming from farmers. There's water coming from a lot of different people, not just the city. How, how do we, as a community, get some, get some help or what's the next step to get to that level? Another question we have, if you want, we have four questions. Do you want to answer one at a time or do you want to listen to all of them? Maybe some might intertwine with others.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and, and state the four and then I'll do my best to recall it. And if I haven't answered it, then just say, well, you didn't get question number two or whatever.
Okay. The other thing you talk about is a level at, the outlet to our city is that outlet there. We find it kind of ironic that that is, what, a 60-inch culvert? Is that correct?
I don't, I don't have that committed to memory at the moment. But, it's more than one.
At that intersection?
Are we talking at, through the bypass?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yes.
And to us, we're wondering how much silt is in that one by chance? We don't know that, having a chance to get down there and look at it myself. The other thing is, do you feel that, you know, you tried to explain this to us before, if we widen that ditch, try to tier it so it could shelf and hold more water? And you were telling us that, that wouldn't have any impact at this point? Is that correct?
That, the ditch that goes between the city and, and down to Lake Wakanda? Is that what, it would have fairly limited because of the nature of the, of the height of the outlet at Wakanda? Yes.
The other thing, when you talked about enrollment of this National Flood Insurance, we talked about this at our last meeting and there's, I'm, I'm still confused on, I apologize. I may be not the brightest light bulb. But, the, the one thing I look at is, is you're telling us to enroll in this National Flood Insurance Program. Now, is this going to, is this a program that the city needs to put their arms around, develop a program? And therefore, if, are you saying that the citizens, individual citizens can purchase this or does everybody have to purchase this or how does this?
Okay, let, let me try to go through the, the questions now that you've posed. The first question was, how do you work with the Pollution Control Agency? And through a few meetings that we've had with the Pollution Control Agency, one of the things that they've stated is that in order for the city to get more credit for discharging their water and improving their water in the Grass Lake area, there needs to be some pre-treatment of the water that runs into that area. And they were fairly complimentary of the city to know that, you know, that the city would be building detention, for example, at the former wastewater treatment plant site and perhaps incorporating a water quality treatment component to that, which would show that you're reducing some of the major heavier sediments and removing that out upstream of discharging that into the lake. I think showing PCA that you're still committed to doing all of those things, helping them understand that this is a very complex and, and difficult issue for the city because, you know, there's nobody's fault here. It's just a circumstance of how the city developed. And bringing some of those key players more up the learning curve on the issues that you face will help. And I do believe that at the end of the day, the city would be able to prevail and get significant credit for doing get significant credit for doing pre-treatment and then discharging into the Grass Lake area for final treatment before water is allowed to drain into the ditch system and then down to Candy, Ohio. They just aren't willing to give you some sort of carte blanche credit right now because they don't know a lot of the logistics of what would occur. And so there'll need to be some negotiations and coordination to work on that. And the Pollution Control Agency, the Minnesota Board of Water and Soil Resources are all trying to work together to combine efforts and make sure that this actually works, not only for the city, but as you mentioned, the large drainage area that drains into that chain of lakes that has nothing to do with the city as well. So I think that answers that question. And I answered the other two as you asked it. Then you asked about the flood insurance program. Flood insurance program is a voluntary program that enables the city's citizens, as well as the city, to have the opportunity to purchase flood insurance at a dramatically reduced cost than you might be able to do. There aren't very many other programs out there that offer flood insurance. I mean, Lloyd of London's offers some of that stuff at an unbelievable cost. So entering into this program and simply adopting ordinances that are consistent with that program and showing FEMA that you have done that and that you're planning to manage waters consistent with that enables the city and the citizens to purchase flood insurance. And that would be—anybody in the city can do that. Nobody would be forced to. The only people that would be essentially forced to buy flood insurance would not be coming from FEMA or the city or other government. It would come from a banker, for example, that may have a mortgage on your property. If you're in a close proximity to a flooding area, that banker may say, "You need to get flood insurance in order to get a loan from me or to keep your loan with me." And up until—the city adopts that flood plane—the FEMA flood plane program, the ability for you as an individual to buy flood insurance to comply with your lender's requirements is almost cost prohibitive. And so simply enrolling in this program is something that would be a great value to the city. And every single business owner and homeowner that's in close proximity to any of the flooding, but anybody within the city, no matter where they lived, could, if they wanted to, then buy flood insurance at a dramatically reduced rate. And nobody would be forced into it by at least FEMA or the city or the county or other governmental agencies.
Where do we sit with the model on that right now? I know there was some question throughout the whole state with FEMA and their models.
This is a non-modeling issue. You can enroll in the program without having any flood plane mapped at all. It's just—you enroll in it and you modify your ordinances to manage consistent with the program. And by its very nature, that enables the city residences, businesses to purchase flood insurance then. And it's all a voluntary program.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll open it to everybody else.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the public? Comments? David?
Hi, I'm Dave Becker. I live at 1010 Candy, Ohio Avenue. I passed out a couple of pictures earlier to the mayor, to Holly, and to Steve here from Barr. Hopefully, they made it around. The pictures show basically the backflow of water that enters into the intersection. You know, this is obviously a complex issue. We've spent an hour, a good hour, on it, and I'm sure Steve could go on for many hours explaining the details of all this. But, you know, really what we need here—you know, I don't mind the water that comes from the sky to sit at our intersection. In fact, even if it comes down 11th Street and makes the corner, that's fine. It's just that when the water starts backing up and pushing up through the storm sewer and causes, you know, a two-foot wave of water coming into the intersection, that tells you then that we have obviously a major issue, as Steve has stated. I guess the one thing that I would ask the council and the staff to do—I first went to the Public Works Committee in the summer of 2003 after we witnessed the first event after we had moved in. At that time, we were told to, you know, throw some dirt around the floundation and quit bugging us. Later on, of course, things—every year, it seems like we do get more rain and more events. Who knows? That maybe statistically is not right, but it seems like it. And I think some of that has to do with the fact that we continue to add tar in the city and we don't do anything with ponding. And since that time, Jorgensen's lost their home. You know, we just have—I guess what I'm asking is this. We need somebody or a group of people or someone to take this thing and say, "Let's move it ahead." Because what happened, I'm sure, back, you know, years ago is, you know, somebody went to the council or to the Public Works and they said, "Wow, that's—it was a 100-year event. Get out of here. There's nothing we can do." So they left and they got frustrated with the city and the government, and the government doesn't listen to me in any way. But that was the end of it. Well, then, 10 years later, somebody else comes up and says, "Hey, we got a pro"—and you see what I'm saying? It seems to get pushed under the rug way too often. And what I'd like to see is, I guess, some action. We have—luckily, we've done some things. So let's give a hand to everyone involved in that. But there's a lot more that we could do. I think we've done a little pond over by Trot Avenue by the railroad tracks there. We've done, obviously, Jorgensen's old lot when we took the house out of there. But there are just continuing things that we can do. And I know the Stormwater Task Force has put together a number of items that could be done and could be done quickly. And this not only affects us that are sitting here in this room, but it affects our kids who plan on making the city of Wilmer their home. So anyway, I just ask for your help on that and let's just keep it as kind of a front and center type item. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
My name is Terry Brunson. I live at 520 Ninth Street Southwest. And thank you for the report and, Mr. Mayor, and council members and the city staff and interested parties. I first got involved in the matter of stormwater issues back in 2008 when there was a proposal to construct a detention pond or something of that nature in Garfield Park across the street from which I live. And to me, that seemed an unusual idea to hold water in an area where we're trying to get water out of. Unfortunately, my remarks aren't too well scripted tonight, but I will pick up on one thing that we heard in the report, that there's an idea to use open areas for future water detention or retention or ponding or whatever we want to call it. But let's be careful about the term "open" because if we use the term "open," then we assume unused. We assume this area has no value to anyone. And lumped into the categorization of open areas, we heard Garfield Park, Kennedy School. Those areas are used by people. We heard about a plea for action for our future children who want to make Wilmer their home. I would ask the mayor and the city council to please consider the use of park space as a last resort for retaining water. Because once we dig that hole, once we create that pond, we can't get it back. That park is gone. I first got involved in this issue because I wanted to preserve the quality of life living near a park. That's a focal point for our neighborhood. And the last word that I'll have to say on this issue is, I want to preserve the quality of life that comes with living near a park. It's come full circle. Please consider other alternatives beyond using our parks because they're not unused spaces. They're not simply open, but they are revered and used. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Joe, did you have another comment?
I just wanted to say, out of all the models they created, we still will have some intersections that will fill with water. Doesn't matter one, two, three, four, five, six, or seven plan. And the one thing that our citizens need to know is that some of our corners are holding ponds for a short period of time. And I don't know the exact depth that they may be comfortable with, but the one thing that we have to understand is that some of our corners may be holding ponds. So we are not going to get rid of water at every corner. So I just wanted to point that out to the citizens that be watching.
Thank you, Joe. Any other—Laura?
Good evening, mayor and council members, residents at large, city staff. First of all, Steve, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight. I do have a couple of questions for you. Last year, it was talked about the fact that they wanted to put in grated manhole covers at the corner of 10th and Candy, Ohio. Could you tell me how that would affect the residents at that corner?
I didn't quite hear what kind of manhole covers you're talking—
Grated manhole.
Oh, grated. These are covers that, instead of being solid, would be—would have grates. They in themselves would just enable water to come out of the storm sewers at a faster rate. Right now, you see water coming out, perhaps out of other catch basins that are along the side of the road or some of these open curb-cut areas. By having grates over the manholes in the center of the street, that just allows for another area for water to equalize to a certain depth a bit faster. That won't improve flooding. It won't reduce flooding. It's just enabling water to relieve itself a little faster than what occurs right now with the existing system. So I don't think that would be any sort of a corrective measure at all.
Okay. And then the photos were passed out by my husband this evening. I guess I would like to know why that water comes up those manhole covers at 10th and Candy, Ohio? And why, for years, that's been okay? And at one point in time, how does that stop? Council members and mayor, I'd like to say, I don't think any of you have that happening at your intersections. I would like to know why it has to happen at 10th and Candy, Ohio.
If that's a question directed towards me, as I mentioned, the storm sewer systems are significantly undersized throughout the area. And then we also have significant other factors. Remember, I talked about tailwater and areas of imperviousness, all kind of interacting. And what happens is, is water can't flow downhill to some other place fast enough. And when it's flowing in a pipe, it's going to flow whichever way is easiest for that water to flow. And in your particular case, it's easier to flow and come out of the catch basins than it is to go downstream because there's significant hydraulic forces, standing water downstream, that prohibits it from flowing down that way. If everything was a free outfall and the storm sewers were sized big enough, you wouldn't have that problem. But the problem is, is there's no ability to have some sort of free outfall. We are kind of stuck with tailwater conditions that are very significant.
And then my next question would be, is there any way for that to be stopped? My point is, at 10th and Candy, Ohio, as my husband said, we would be great if we had what fell from the sky, even what pooled to that intersection. But our major problem, as many areas of town is, when it gets stopped somewhere downstream and it starts coming up. Per the pictures, you all saw the bubbles in the middle of the street. They are coming out of a manhole cover. That's when—I know in my neighborhood, we have the problem. Is there any way to stop that?
You can stop that by covering up or essentially completely eliminating the catch basins. But the problem then is, you don't have anywhere for the water that comes down that street or comes off your roof to flow anywhere because now you've got a low area in that intersection and it's got nowhere to flow because you've capped off all of the catch basins. So it comes with a cause and effect in both directions. If there was an easy way to have stopped it and to have alleviated that, we would have identified it. And so, you know, it's—like I said at the very beginning of our presentation, this is a very complex and difficult location. There's ways that we can minimize that significantly. But I don't think that under certain storm events, we're going to create a situation where we don't see water coming out of those. It would be probably less height, less overall depth, but we still will probably see some of that. Some of that may be determined to be more nuisance after you do some improvements. Maybe, you know, a foot of water in a street as opposed to four feet of water is something that's acceptable. So those sorts of things are what we're suggesting that the next actions be to identify and further define what nuisance flooding is versus what dangerous flooding is. Certainly, four feet of flooding is not something that is insignificant and it is dangerous and it can cause significant damage as well to people driving into it unexpectedly, to people that are living by it like yourselves.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you again, Steve. And the other thing I would like to reiterate is this. The intersection that I live by, it is not flooding of the street, flooding of the public easement, or flooding even of the sidewalk. Those of you who have not been there, please come and look. Last summer, we had numerous times of flooding. And again, it was not on public land or in the street. It was surrounding my neighbor's home. Imagine opening your door and having water up to your foundation. That, to me, no one should have to live that way. Thank you again.
Thank you, Laura.
John Sullivan, 508 Southeast, 13th Street. Thanks for your presentation, Steve. I just have a—more of a question for Steve. I'm not bothered by flooding at my house personally. They are just a couple blocks down from you on 17th and Trot. But we had some interesting discussions about three years ago in the Public Works Committee. But we had some interesting discussions about three years ago, in the Public Works Department, about water gardens. It kind of got washed over, if the water ran too fast. But the question I have for Steve is, over a period of time, if Wilmer was to build a hundred water gardens a year? Because runoff, as far as I see, is a lot of the impact. Would that make a difference?
We, actually, it probably won't. Unless the rainwater gardens would be significantly larger than most residential sorts of rainwater gardens that are currently built. Most of the rainwater gardens that are, are built for water quality treatment, as well as stormwater detention, are really designed for the first one inch of rainfall. When we're talking hundred-year event sorts of things, we're talking a lot more. Certainly, you know, if every yard had a rainwater garden, that would be helpful. But we did essentially model that type of thing by saying, well, what would happen if we took the first inch of runoff off of the hundred-year event? And it really didn't do a lot.
Sure, it wouldn't. But a ten-year event, it probably would.
Ten-year event, it might, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll open it up. Counsel, any questions?
A lot of them.
All right. Just go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. Steve, thank you for this report. I think when I first saw it laying here this evening, I knew it was coming. By the way, we talked about it at a retreat. I was just about, I was just about drooling, because I've been waiting for it, and for your, your survey of what you, what your recommendations are. So, thank you for that, and I appreciate the extra reading material. Lake Wagona, Wocanga. DNR has set the elevation at that lake for, correct? And they needed 75% of the residents to approve to change, or to sign off on the change in that elevation, or to lower it?
I don't know what, maybe the person from DNR here can answer that. I believe that you would need nearly 100%, but I'm not positive of that. You'd also need to get DNR to approve it, and that becomes very problematic. I don't know if DNR would actually approve lowering of, of a normal elevation of a lake. Very, very rarely will they do that. But we did take a look and modeled the situation that, what happens if we lower the flood level, or the, the normal level, rather, on the lake? What does that do for the city? And the answer was fairly minimal impact back up, five miles up into the city, if we lowered it half a foot, or a foot. The lay of the land is so flat that, you know, a foot a drop in five miles is, you know, very, very flat. And so, even if you were to drop the lake a foot, it would have very minimal impact within the town.
When you say minimal, Steve, are you talking maybe a 10%, it'd be 10% effective, or 50% effective?
No, it wouldn't even be 10% in terms of, of impacting any flood level. And the only, and the closest place that it might impact something would be in and around the bypass. The further upstream you go in town, it would have virtually no impact at all.
Thank you. That was, of course, one of the obvious thoughts, is that if that could be lowered, it would solve our problems, and I appreciate your input on that. We also, you also talked about storage, or storage of stormwater inside the city limits. And it's been discussed before, current, current requirements through the Planning Commission and developers on, on stormwater retention. And I think that's just an automatic given, and that's going to have to be brought back to the Planning Commission and Bruce Peterson's office, without any doubt. There will have to be improvements and changes made in that requirement. Would there be any way, you talked about the backflow. Backflow, of course, it means we're getting the water back into our, into our areas. By lowering Lake Wocanga a foot, would that alleviate the backflow?
Not really. Because it's still a capacity issue in the ditch system that goes between the city and the lake. And in order to have any sort of impact, the ditch would have to be enlarged enormously, including the, the culverts that go through the various crossings of the ditch, all the way down. And if you did that, you would be chasing water downstream faster, in all, in all likelihood, would be creating a higher flooding condition on the lake, and you'd get the public outcry again because of it. So, pushing it downstream isn't going to be your friend. It's going to be fraught with difficulty, and, and it could be fairly significant difficulty.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead. Counsel and doctrine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your report. On page 16, recommendations, recommendation number four is review and revise city stormwater ordinances. You indicated that we need to place new requirements on developers. I don't know if that's going to be part of your final report, to recommend areas that shouldn't be developed now because of the difficulty with water that runs off, you know? But we do have a large, 400 to 600 acres of industrial development at our old airport site. Is that something that this report would be able to tell us, whether, I mean, certain areas that would, you wouldn't recommend new development in, unless there are some fairly stringent methods of dealing with the water that they potentially would create?
The answer to that is yes. We will be, the, we do have a, a map, essentially like one of the first ones I showed, with all of the blue crosshatched areas that are inundated. Any areas where you see the blue crosshatching is, is ones that we would recommend not developing in. If it's open or to be redeveloped, we'd suggest staying to the higher ground around it. Relative to the industrial area over by the old airport, that really is in a different sub watershed. That's part that goes over to Hawk Creek, if I remember. And that's less problematic than the southeast quadrant. But your ordinance is one that is going to be citywide, and so, it would have impact on those areas as well. It's not just going to be isolated to the southeast quadrant. And so, yes, you would, you would have an ordinance that would be manageable for any area within town, and not just the southeast quadrant.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Klein.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You made it sound kind of simple to get flood insurance. Kevin, you've made it seem kind of difficult to get flood insurance. So, I'm kind of wondering, is it difficult or easy?
Go ahead, if you'd like to.
I guess our consultant and staff data do have a little bit of conflict there. And Steve talks about the opportunity to buy. That's not our concern. It's the mandated category. And he mentioned mortgages. It is, our understanding is a little different, and we may have to go back and talk to the banking world here. But that the purchase of a mortgage and the closing of a mortgage, there's a fee less than $50 that checks the flood map clearinghouse. And I think they're down in Texas, and one's in Illinois. When they check those, if your property that you're buying the mortgage on, not, not just the building, but the property, they're a little wary, and they would man, if it's in the flood zone, in the gray area, the shaded areas on our map, they will mandate that you buy the flood insurance. Those gray areas in this city are around the lakes. And we haven't had them flood out in the 26 years I've been here. So, that would be 26 years they would have been mandated, or the length of their mortgage, whichever is less, that they were buying that insurance. So, we need to, we need to further work on that detail, but that's the area of concern. That mandated for mortgage holders. Everybody along those lakes may be free of a mortgage, but the next time they sell it, the property, those mortgage buyers will be, will have a concern. So, that's.
We'll try to clarify that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The, the flood insurance program isn't going to stop those mandates. They're, along the lakes, right now, I believe there's the old FEMA maps. If, if those lakes were, were originally mapped, and a lending company looked at a map and sees that a property has the potential to flood based on a FEMA map, they will require flood insurance. And if the city does not enroll in that flood insurance program, whoever they mandate that purchase of tho, that insurance for, there are limited places where that person can go to get insurance. Lloyds of London is one, and that comes with a much, much higher rate than getting it from the federal government. And so, if there are floodplain maps that are already done for the chain of lakes, and there's lending agencies that are looking at that, whether you're in or not in the flood insurance program isn't going to matter a bit. They're going to still tell that person, they have to get flood insurance. As a board that wants to be responsive to its constituency, one way that you can be responsive, in my belief, is to enroll in that program. That doesn't mean that you map out the city, but you simply make it as, as inexpensive as you possibly can by simply enrolling in that program. I agree 100% with what was just said here. It's just that, when we're recommending going into that flood insurance program, it comes with a dramatically reduced price to anybody that's going to be forced to buy insurance. And it enables people, any part of town that would want, even if their lending agent didn't tell them they had to, some of these folks that have water right up against their doors, it would enable them to purchase flood insurance where they might not be able to if they had to go and knock on Lloyds of London's doors. So, in my opinion, I think it's being responsive to your constituency, and giving them an opportunity. And again, this is all volunteer. There's nobody forcing, no, the government isn't forcing anybody. The only people that force anybody to purchase insurance is a lending agency. And you're just trying to make that as palatable for people that might be forced to do it as possible.
That's contrary to the information that we've always received, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. And another part of the problem is, the last map that we received from FEMA showing floodplains, they showed half a Candy Ojai County underwater. And we sent them back, we said, you have to, you have to redo this. Prior to that, in Wilmer, as Kevin mentioned, the only areas that were designated as floodplains were around the lakes. And every time we talked about flood insurance, the people living around the lakes would come here and say, no, we don't want it, because we will then be required to buy flood insurance, and we're not the ones who get flooded. That's the information we have. We'll check it again. I hope Steve's right.
Thank you.
But that's not the information we have.
Councilman Reese?
Well, away from the flood insurance, but I, we've talked about detention ponds a number of times. And there's a difference between detention and retention. Retention holds the water and keeps it, and it's for water quality issues, right?
That can be one way. There's other ways that you can detain water and get water quality treatment as well. You just detain it longer.
Sure. But the detention ponds that we've talked about, whether it be Garfield School, or Kennedy, or wherever else, that's, that's a short-lived detaining of the water. Because it's, after the storm is over, it's going to slowly drain down into the stormwater system. And that, my assumption is that if it were Garfield, I'll just pick on Garfield, because it was mentioned earlier by a neighbor, it still would be usable, would it not?
Yes, it would. And quite frankly, I wouldn't look at any of these areas as being a single purpose. You do, you design for multiple purposes, and there are many areas, school and ballfield areas, and open areas, that are normally park spaces for people to hike in, to walk in, to bring their animals to, to play ball or soccer. And yet, during and shortly after a storm, water also happens to be able to pond in that location, and then drain out at a certain period of time. And I personally have designed dozens of ponding basins that are multipurpose basins that, under 95% of the time, are park-type basins that can be either used for various ball and play activities, or depending on the type of vegetation you want to include in there. It could be native sorts of vegetation that would not be conducive to playing ball in, but would have a different sort of appearance. And each site is unique. Each site comes with desired purposes, and you can design both for water quality deten, for water quality treatment, for stormwater detention, and for park use. And we've done that in many cases. Does that mean that every particular site can be, you know, cover everybody's desires? Possibly not. But the multipurpose basins are what I typically call these things.
Another question, and I'm going to, I think I asked you a similar question the first time I heard this report. But our former wastewater treatment site abuts our former dump. And I've been told that there are funds that are available for us to, I've literally moved that dump out. And if we move that dump out, and had a larger detention area there, would there, would there be benefit to that, to the city?
The benefit would be that you might be able to build a larger detention area and get more water to stand in that location than someplace else, like around the Candy Mall, et cetera. To answer the question about funding, there is funds available for moving landfills to other locations, former landfills. The best funding is through the DEED program and Department of Economic and something Development.
Department of Employment and Economic Development.
Employment Development, yes. And typically, the funds that come from them are wrapped around jobs and further employment considerations. And so, if you were to go to the DEED and apply for grants to do something like that, you would definitely need to be addressing it relative to, you know, creation of jobs, creation of business, those sorts. of business, those sorts of things, in addition to the detention issues. There are other funds available, and I'm, there are other people at my company that kind of live, eat, and breathe that more than I do. And these programs, these grant programs, or low-interest, or low-interest loan-type programs, come and go, and they're constantly changing. And, but there are some opportunities for that, and there may be some viable option to deal with the old former landfill for a multiple of purposes. One being detention and water quality treatment, and the other being maybe able to utilize some of it for jobs and businesses, et cetera.
If, even, even with the facility that we have there now, and the detention area with the wastewater treatment facility being decommissioned, short of putting in kind of gates that open up from the ditch to let the water in, and then closing them so that you can drain it down or pump it out, to catch that storm surge, is there a way of doing that? I, I'm trying to think of ways that we're able to catch that storm surge and then get rid of it at a slower rate later on.
Uh, yes, there are a variety of ways to do that. Multi-tier outlets that allow for small storms up through, for example, say, the two-year event, to go into a basin, and the only way that that water would leave would be through a, maybe a smaller opening, or a smaller weir. But if you got storms bigger than a small amount, it would come in to a basin and leave the basin at a faster rate, and you'd have these multi-tier weirs or multi-tier structures that would cause certain amounts of that volume of a runoff to be held and detained longer, and other amounts for bigger storms to just use it on a shorter basis, and then relieve itself as the downstream system will take it, and would be less subject to some sort of a control structure that would really reduce the peak flow. But there, it's, it's a design factor, or situation, that we deal with all the time.
Just on first look, do you think there would be any benefit to researching that?
Uh, we know that there is ways to, to combine detention and water quality treatment there by simply building what we call an extended detention-type structure, where you have these multi-tier facilities, so that you get both water quality treatment and flood detention in the same volume. And, uh, yeah, there's, we do it a lot. And it isn't just BAR that does that. Lots of engineering firms are designing these, these days.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
That's essentially what we're doing, our plan to do if we go to Phase Two on the demolition program.
I'm looking at maximizing the area, Mick, and I know that that's kind of a scary thing to look at the old dump, but if we're able to maximize the amount of area that we can hold water, maybe that's worth it.
Have a question?
Yeah. Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, I'm a little confused on Grass Lake now. We were told there's no benefit to us, but now we're supposed to use it for water quality. Are we supposed to use it for water quantity, too? And if we are, how do we get the water over there in a quick action?
The, I don't know if everybody heard that or not, the mic on yours is a little low. I don't know who told you there would be no benefit to the city. From a, from a water quality standpoint, there is, I believe, in my opinion, significant benefit. The way that Grass Lake is being proposed to be built would be, there would be dikes and, in that area, that would cause water to actually be higher than the outlet that would go through, um, the bypass, that goes through the bypass right now. So the only way that you would get water into Grass Lake would be through a pump station. And that would pump the water up and over into that, into Grass Lake. The advantage of that is, is whatever the capacity of that pump is, or pumps, that would relieve the system for flood considerations as well, further upstream. In particular, it would have the most impact in and around the area just immediately west of the bypass, and in and around that whole heavy commercial areas such as Menards, Home Depot, Walmart, Candy Mall, in that area.
Any idea what an estimate would be for that project? Be less than $40 million?
It would be part of a problem. It is not going to be, uh, I don't know if you could pump it fast enough for the 100-year event. It would be quite costly, but certainly that particular, the pumps themselves, would probably be under a $40 million price tag. The question is, is would it have, how far upstream would it impact? And what sorts of conveyance systems would you have to build to get the water down there to do it? Right now, the current ditches and pipes that you have to convey the water down to the bypass are sized such that it wouldn't get it there very fast, and so you're limited there. But it would have, it would definitely have positive impact on flooding, for sure.
Mr. Mayor, I think what Mr. Fagerly, Steve, is talking about is correspondence we have from the MPCA that is telling us they would not give us any water quality credits for our participation in the Grass Lake project, simply because it's outside of the city boundaries. Did I state that correctly?
Yes.
I believe that there are, that's part of the future negotiations that we would need to face with those folks. And I believe that some of the people that had said that have at least changed the wheel of their ideas in that regard, from what I have understood. I've not had extensive discussions with some of the people that authored that behind the scenes, but as I understand, there's further rethinking of that.
That's encouraging.
Barry?
One other question. In this time where there's a lot of foreclosures and repo homes out there, should we be looking at some of these that are dilapidated and tear them down and start putting holding ponds in neighborhoods?
Well, in areas where it makes sense, where, where they are in strategic locations, perhaps, but one or two in some, you know, isolated area that's away from any of the flooding problems probably would have minimal sort of impact.
So it should be in the core area that's...
Yeah, in the areas in the vicinity of where these things are flooding, would be my suggestion.
All right.
Any other questions?
Councilman Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Steve, for being here this evening. It sounds like another route that we could go that might be even cheaper would be to buy the houses. I know this is suggested to me by one of our staff members, but $13 million, buy a lot of houses, and then let the water come. Reflecting on what something that Councilman Reese said, the ditch 23A over by Cashwise, where it starts there, is there such a thing as a huge check valve to put in there so it can't backflow up to 10th Candy High? Because that's where it starts. It's, it's the, the underground tsunami, or whatever you want to call it, starts there.
I like that.
Down, and, I mean, it just inundates that area quickly. And then it, is there such a thing as a big check valve? What's the size of that?
I've, I've actually designed some very big check valves, huge, that are as, nearly as tall as this room.
Wow.
Uh, so they do make valves. They do come with maintenance and other problematic issues. But there is the possibility, if it's placed in the, in a, in a good location, to have benefited value. And I do very frequently install backflow preventer devices on, as part of designs.
It wouldn't get used that often. I mean, in the middle of a 100-year rain, we'd have to determine, you know, I mean, it's pretty easy to tell at 10th and Candy High when you've got 100-year rain. But again, if it's maybe used once a year, twice, three times a year, it would, wouldn't that also, um, should it, is this going to back into Cashwise, or not Cashwise, but the, the mall, it's going to fill that mall with some water? But wouldn't it also accelerate the water heading down the ditch instead of coming back? It's, it'd back up, and then it'd have to start going the other way?
Uh, it's a di, it's such a dynamic situation there. It would probably have some benefit at certain times of the storm, and yet at other times of the storm, it might not, just simply because how the water and how the, how it's flowing at any particular time during a storm. You have water change in directions fairly frequently at various locations within the city. Coming into a pipe, coming out of a pipe, flowing down a street, jumping back into a pipe, all sorts of very complex dynamics. And then you also have stuff coming into town through the bypass pipes as well. Has some impact as well. So a properly-placed backflow preventer will, would help, and that would be part of any sort of ultimate designs and design refinement that would be part of some implementation. So that answers that question. The other question is, was purchasing homes and perhaps moving them out, that does deal with the individual homeowners. You still have issues with the roadways. And you would need to address whether or not you'd want to keep certain intersections as a intersection anymore, too. It might be that you don't have a drive-through area anymore in certain locations if you decided to opt to that sort of a process. And that's what that feasibility report that we recommend, recommended would do, would be to look at some of these sorts of issues. The other aspect would be, in addition to purchasing homes or floodproofing them, would be possibly installation of automatic barricades. Things like that, that once a certain amount of rainfall or a certain situation arises, that the barricades would cross across, uh, roadways that would prevent people from driving into, uh, upon, that they wouldn't realize is, gee, it's three feet deep, or two and a half feet deep, or four feet deep, as it is in some of the areas.
All of these suggestions are, they're, none of them are the solution. There's not one solution. There's several things that are going to have to be done, but I would think just that check valve, or a gate, or something, even if you didn't close it all the way, I mean, you're not going to have this blast coming back up there. And maybe you control, um, other lower areas, somewhere on Wilmer Avenue, maybe at the corner of First Street and Wilmer Avenue. Maybe you open it up there so it can spill a little out there, and then a little more further, the further west you go, it starts to go uphill, I think, after like Second or Third Street. But you could control something where the water goes. It's just a suggestion. We, we use them in, before Olivia and Bird Island had sanitary sewer put in, it was the storm and the sanitary sewer was the same. And when building a home down there, every one of them, we had to put a check valve in where it comes in the basement, because otherwise it backed up in all the houses. And I just imagine that same thing happening there, being able to, the water gets a certain level, bang, you, you stop it, or three-fourths of it, or whatever, just so it can't just go back then explode. Because it's affected our road there, too. I mean, I mean, it gets under the tire and pushes the tire up at that intersection.
Sure.
So, anyway, I, I thank you again for being here, and we'll have to deal with this, I guess.
If there's no further questions, I think I'd like to call, oh, I'm sorry.
Just one more question. Talking about moving the water rather than doing it by nature, by natural fall of one foot from here to Lake Wakanja, would a series of pumps help move enough water? Or how many would, would pumps be feasible to help move the water from our, our collection point at Cashwise, let's say, into ditch 23A? Would that help alleviate some of the problems as far as increase in the flow of the water?
Um, in certain cases, it would. It, it would be on a site-by-site basis. But in some cases, you'd pump it someplace, and it would come back around through a different way. In other cases, you might be able to pump it and then do, as Mr. Christiansen said, provide a backflow prevention that would allow, would prevent it from, you know, doing end run around you. So it just kind of depends. But those would be possibilities as part of a final design on any particular project.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Councilmember Christiansen talking about the backflow prevention device, and I know that in some of the discussions, and I know Lauren was there, but there was discussion about the Grass Lake project, and that at, right where 23A goes underneath the bypass, they said, "We get such a surge coming from the east that it backs up into the city." And at that time, they were actually discussing a backflow prevention device at the bypass, because that surge comes, and it just comes back into the city and stops all of our ability to get rid of our water.
Uh, we actually took a look at that and found that the backflow prevention device at that one location, for at least existing conditions, does prevent the surge, but it doesn't necessarily reduce the flooding further upstream to any great amount. And it's very complex, and it would be hard for me to really describe why that would occur tonight. But we can show you the dynamics of that. If you, if the city would ever want us, we could bring our computer out and actually show you what occurs in a particular storm, and why that wouldn't necessarily work in that location. We did look at it. I'm sorry, I'm not full of all sorts of good news. I wish I, I wish I could have added to the good news of the, the blessed wedding over the weekend and getting Osama here, but, you know, this is stuff that we all need to know.
Thank you so much for coming. We appreciate it. Can you stick around a little bit if other people have questions?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. With that, I think I'll call about 10-minute recess. Please, those of you that came with the stormwater issue, to hear about that, you're certainly welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but understand if you don't. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes. Please, yes.
The reason that I wanted to speak is that the city has done a fantastic job of curtailing their budget and hiring fees and dropping off a lot of capital improvements. Came to my attention recently that one of the department heads was given a brand-new 2011 Ford Explorer LTD for use 24/7. And this vehicle had to cost around $30,000. I was corrected by the finance director that it was only $27,000. So, the finance manager told me that it was about $29,000. It's a thousand bucks, a big deal. But, driving to and from work over, I think it's over 30 miles a day could add another $2,600 a year just for gas, just for that one trip. The other two department heads do not have a personal vehicle, to my knowledge, but they do get a $350 a month dip in for car expenses, which the other department head did also. I know when I took my last job, I had to commute 44 miles. And I knew when I took the job that I would have that expense on my own. And it was not deductible, and I did not get paid for it. But I knew it. It was a good job. Once I got there, then I did mileage if I had work outside the office. So I bore that myself, and the pay was a lot less with benefits, I'll tell you. But I think it's something that the council should be made aware of. If they weren't, they should have been told. I know you get a Friday letter every Friday, maybe you were told in that, I don't know. That's not made public and let you ask for it. It should be on the website. But I just do not think this is right. This is not keeping with what you've been practicing in tightening the budget, keeping down expenses, and cutting back on capital improvement projects. The main thing that kind of got me with this is that, where did it come from? Because I had the 2011 capital improvements, and there was nothing in there for Public Works or engineering for a vehicle. So I got an email that same night, I think, or the next morning stating that it came from the 2010 capital improvements. I showed the 2010 capital improvements to that individual, and he would not even look at it. So he was told something that was not true. It was not in the 2010 appropriations either. But anyway, I think these kind of things need to be stopped, and you should know about them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Joe, I have you down here. Did you want to speak again?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Joe Rither, 1912 20th Avenue Southwest. Four years ago, we had our road redone, similar to what you folks are going to do on your extended program tonight. And we that live on 20th Avenue are not happy at all with the results. Our road is falling apart. It's four years old. And I live in a horseshoe, and I find it hard to believe that the horseshoe that only sees a garbage truck go around it is falling apart. I don't have the answer, other than I handed out a couple pages on concrete. And I think our city needs to look at putting more concrete. I don't think the patuminous or the asphalt or tar, whatever y'all want to call it, has the strength and has the span to put up with our expansion contraction of our roads in our city. The one thing I guess I look at is that I think our roads are getting completed way too late in the season. I know our local companies around here work their way back home, but I think our roads are being laid too late in the year, where the asphalt or the tar, patuminous again, is not getting the proper time to cure. I would like to see, instead of deadlines of November 1st, I'd like to see deadlines of October 1st. It just seems that our stuff is put in rather quickly. Not saying they don't do a good job, it's just that the product is not lasting. The other thing is, subbase, our subbase underneath the asphalt is very critical. It's actually more critical than it is under concrete. Again, asphalt doesn't have the span that concrete has. I know underneath our road that the compaction of our product was not right. It did not have enough binder in it. If you were to take and try and make a ball of the product, it should stay in like a clay ball. It did not. It fell apart. They still laid the tar. They laid both layers of tar or asphalt the same year. They didn't even give us a season for it to season. I encourage you all to drive down our road, that's only four years old. We spent 75% of the bill, the taxpayer, you 25%. You're our voice. We cannot say nothing. We pay the bill. Again, I owe a little bit of money against it. I'd like to renege on that money, because I don't think we got the bang for the buck. The other thing is, what is our warranty? What's our warranty we get from the contractors? I know the contractors that are on the council, they're structurally, have to warranty their product 10 years. What is our warranty? I don't think the city's getting the bang for the buck. I can beat the horse to death, you know where I'm going. I'd like the council to take a look at our road. I'd like to see something done with our road. It's not going to make 15 years. And that doesn't help our budget. And if you look at the couple sheets, if you would please, I highlighted the website. I'd encourage you all to study that, please. Actually, I can only encourage you. There's a lot of studies done. They were done by University of Minnesota. There are studies done by MINDOT. There's areas that were talked about, that they talked about down in Olmsted County, which is down in Rochester. They talk about in the Wasika area. And they have a lot of similar problems that we have, a lot of clay-based product. If you guys travel to Fargo, you look at all the Fargo streets, Fargo's putting in concrete. I was up there in the spring when our roads were lifting, their roads were nice and smooth where the concrete was. Where they had asphalt, yes, they did have problems. So, I encourage you guys to look at this, because as the city grows, and we have higher expenses all the way around, as we heard tonight, we spend a lot of money on fixing our roads. And I just don't think we're getting the bang for the buck. You're seeing decay around the manholes, you're seeing, you take the corners, I ride a lot of bike, and you don't dare ride close to the corners, because they all sink in. Shouldn't say almost sink in. And it's a hazard. So, again, I'm not going to beat the horse to death. Please take a look at concrete. I think we're going to get a lot more life out of our streets and our expenses. Study the website, please. And I hope in the future, we might see a little bit brighter streets than the black streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Don't run away. I do know this, that Public Works and MEC are taking a look at it and studying the feasibility of it, so we're looking at it.
Well, that's good. You look at the expense, it might be a little bit more upfront expense, but in the long term, it's a lot cheaper. And that's what we're not getting at. I encourage you all to drive down Highway 12 here. Highway 12 was laid, I think, in '85. It's been maintained one time. You go from the stoplight here, you head east, we've laid it twice. Concrete heading west to the old Jennie O'Plant, patuminous heading east. That's got to tell you something. I mean, this stuff, you ride bike on it, it's as smooth as you can, you can't believe it. You go that way, it's not that way. So right outside the street here, just drive up and down Highway 12, and you'll see the example I'm talking about.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Now, is Randy Fredrickson, is he still here?
We have the departmental report by Kevin Halliday, City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of the highlights of the departmental activities in 2010. I understand from my fellow staff members that brevity is the key word tonight. And so I'll try to keep it that way. And they're not going very well already. Here we go. On page one of the report you have before you are the license and permits. Just a quick comparison is, the total amount received for the various permits listed was over $61,000, as compared to just short of $50,000 last year. Those gains were in the areas of on-sale alcohol, with the American Legion and the VFWs increasing their contribution. We also had the barn, and we had the stingers. So that pretty much accounts for those increases. Our parking enforcement, we have slightly 300 less tickets issued in 2010 over the prior year, with the number paid down. However, the dollars collected was not that significant, with $20,212 collected for those parking tickets. On the lower page, you will see the administrative citations. It should be the last year that we'll report that, as we've terminated that, as reported by the police chief in his report, and there's only a couple during that calendar year. Our property and casualty is always a nice area that we have a kind of an in-house goal of not having any expenses whatsoever for it, net expenses, and we didn't quite make it again this year. But our premiums went down $131,913 from the prior year due to increasing the aggregate deductible for losses at $200,000 instead of $150,000. Dividends were up a little bit, $4,000 more to $33,000, giving us the net premiums for all our property and casualty at $98,500. We paid losses during the year, and that is in the next page. I gave additional detail for you to understand where some of those losses are. But those losses amounted to $25,157. Unfortunately, that's a total outflow of about $125,000. We have the million-dollar insurance deductible or set-aside fund, but the interest gained on that, which is now somewhat diminished, is only about $25,000. And so, we didn't net that out at zero. The property and casualty losses vary over the years. Generally, the police department has a few struggles out there. This year, a lot of them happened to be the Public Works Department, and that was directly related to the endless hours that they were out removing snow this year over prior years. If you have any concerns on any of them, you could check with me at a later date. Our workers' compensation history on page five starts with the number of employees, which is down four, full-time equivalencies from the prior year. The man-hours also fall down then to 260,000 man-hours. The first report of injuries that have been filed is down three to 13 for the year, corresponding probably directly with the man-hours. Unfortunately, we did have another single case where there was time restricted, and there was 113 days of restriction there for some injuries. The dollars spent on claims was only $11,038. The investment portfolio, as you can see, ended with just short of $54 million on page six, over $51 million the year before. We can attribute that a little bit to capital projects that were delayed, because we were worried about the local government aid cuts. And so by delaying things and not purchasing anything until the last half of the year beyond, some of those slated were not even expended during the year. We also had an unusual amount of property owners prepaying their assessments. That generally runs between 8% and 10% every year. Last year was 42%. Directly related, we understand, to the 4.25% bond rate that we are charging versus maybe 3/4 of 1% on their savings, and so they wanted to save that interest. That does give us a lot of prepaid dollars. Again, we're just short this year of $1 million out in assessments, and we may find the exact same scenario playing itself out. Our interest is shown there significantly down to $1,279,510, as compared to $1,680 the year before. Today, we only have $1 million in a federal farm credit at 4%. The other things that we have, the Freddie Macs and the Fannie Mayes, are earning generally around 3%. And don't look for that to be increasing too much in the near future. In our local access channel, as you know, we have a 5% funding mechanism through charter and intel in the franchise agreement, and that brought in $230,354 last year. One of the highlights, and I'll take a moment to grab this, is that in one of our productions, which was the Ben &amp; Bella Show, this is a partnership that was developed with the Wilmer Early Childhood Family Programs, and they were presenting or filming this Ben &amp; Bella educational program. Jody Wambach, along with Regina Schmitz, who was doing all the educational activities on screen, put in for this award with this programming, which began back in the late fall of 2009. It's been developed with Encyclopedia Britannica, and this partnership got them going and completing this access show that's best fitting our community. And certainly, the intent of the program was to combat the issue of children entering school unprepared, and it really did well at the Telly Awards, the 31st Annual Telly Awards. And it's one of the premier awards that honors the outstanding local and regional and national television programs. So, Rack 8 was right in there, along with other networks, as Fox Sports International, ESPN, and the Discovery Channel, and we were lucky to get one of the awards. So that's one of the accomplishments that Rudy is proud of, and he rightfully so. They have a lot of teamwork and have a lot of great productions. Also in your program, or in your handout, you can see some of the staff members. We have additional people coming forth to help us in the various productions. Latoya Hudson, Bev Knudsen, Larry Selkow is doing a lot with the gymnastics and the school activities. Jamin Johnson continues with the Do You Know program, and Mr. David Hartman is behind We spent a lot of time in the Candio High Area Transit, countywide transit program. We have been at that for many years. And one of the new things that really developed in 2010 is called the JARC route, or the Job Access Reverse Commute. It was something started by the state of Minnesota a few years back. It started slow for us. It was a circular route in the city that would pick up riders and drop them off at the various industrial businesses, and starting slowly with only 932 rides in 2009, but we ended up with 4,260 rides last year. So people have found out there's a great dependability with that service, and they're picking those options as often as they can to get to work in the morning and return home. The 2010 annual ridership was just short of 119,000 one-way trips. The breakdown of that was about $14,000 for the disabled, $16,000 for elderly, $80,000 for working adults, and $6,200 for students. And then above that figure, we also had just short of 7,000 one-way rides provided by senior volunteers. We have 15 to 20 volunteers that do the bulk of the work, but I think we have 40 of them currently listed and on a moment's notice. They offer this service for just the return of the federal mileage rate to take their vehicle and take people anywhere from around Wilmer to Rochester. So it's a very fantastic opportunity that people have, and it's nice for those seniors to volunteer that way. We had elections, of course, in 2010, and things are pretty much the same, except that one of the improvements that was made after the contested races, the senate race in 2008, was to straighten out the ballot process in the absentee ballot category. There was always a lot of confusion, and they spent time at the legislature. What they came up with was an absentee ballot board, where all the ballots no longer went out to the individual precincts. They dealt with at a four-person ballot board at Sam Otterman's office, the county auditor's office, and they took care of all the confusion and the problems. It really was well-received by our election judges out in the polling locations. The cost there shown for 2010 was quite similar to prior years at $47,000. The voter turnout for the primary was at 22.91%. Again, Ward II with its contested races, a little higher. The general voter turnout in November for the whole city was just short of 65%. So this city has normally responded fairly well. One of the items we'd like to show you from our assessors' report is the distribution of the tax dollar within the city. And you see the many categories that are listed there, with the city being about 27 cents out of the dollar. County is 51 cents, the school district 19 cents, and the other categories, those small And we always like to talk about the origination of the tax dollars, because it changes many times, by the way, people lobby in the legislature. In 2010, compares to a decade before, where the personal property was down a little, the industrial property went down considerably from 10, almost 11%, down to 7.7%. The commercial property was very consistent in that decade, but the ag, residential, and apartment properties took the bulk of the hit, went from 54% up to 60%. And that, of course, just goes by the legislation activity. And then the last item that spent a lot of my time was with the Charter Commission. As you know, we began working on March 5th of 2009. We met 20 times in 2009 and 20 times in 2010. There was a lot of items being catalogued, over 150 things that they have worked on. And as you are aware, that final draft is probably one meeting away, with just a couple of items to finalize, and we'll be ready for council consideration. Mr. Mayor, I just will open up for any questions.
Any questions, sir, for Kevin? Councilmember Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just curious, Kevin, the license and permit fees that are collected, does it just go right to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That was it?
Any questions, Don?
Thank you, Kevin. I think we'll move right into item number 11 on the agenda, the Finance Committee Report. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda was a public forum. John Sullivan addressed us with a few concerns. One was the purchase of the new vehicles that we heard about again tonight, the local option sales tax fund, and the status of Job Z with Wilmer Fabrication, as for information. Second item was the airport land release and hangar evaluation agreement. Administrator Schmidt reported that the latest meeting between the city, FAA, and CHIPOL resulted in an agreement to do a more detailed analysis of the reuse of the old airport terminal building. The FAA and CHIPOL are insisting on analysis that covers a minimum of three options, and this is to be done prior to any consideration being given to demolition. Engang Associates has submitted a proposal in the amount of $5,000 to perform a reuse study which would provide the choice in making the building usable for one of three things: one, warehouse purposes; two, industrial use; or three, other business. Following some discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I would introduce a motion to approve the contract with Engang Associates to perform a reuse study of the old airport terminal building for $5,000, that it conform, with Engang Associates, the deadline by which the study needs to be completed, and to confirm with both the FAA and CHIPOL that the options in the Engang proposal are satisfactory.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract with Engang Associates to perform a reuse study of the old airport terminal building for $5,000. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. And motion carries.
The third item was budgetary amendments. Staff explained to us that workers' compensation insurance costs for the fire department were inadvertently omitted in the 2011 budget, and that was in the amount of $20,000. Further, due to a change in the marital status of an employee in the information systems department, health insurance costs need to be increased in the amount of $12,810. As a result, it was proposed that the total of those two amounts, $32,810, be transferred from non-departmental insurance deductible account to temporarily cover the changes. Later in the year, after we see what may happen from the legislature, this account will be reviewed to determine whether the $32,810 should be deducted from another area of the budget. Following some discussion, there was a motion made second and passed, and I would introduce a resolution amending the 2011 budget by increasing the fire department insurances in the amount of $20,000, increasing information systems insurance by $12,810, and decreasing non-departmental insurance deductible by $32,810.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution amending the 2011 budget by increasing fire department insurances in the amount of $20,000, increasing information systems insurances by $12,810, and decreasing the non-departmental insurance deductible by $32,810. Any discussion?
Councilmember Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've never brought this up before, when the police department had to amend their budget also due to marital status. The $12,810, am I understanding this right, that's going to cover the spouse?
Well, it covers family insurance premium.
Okay. And we're paying for it, in other words?
Well, no, it's a cost share.
It is. But our share is the $12,180, is that what you're saying?
Yes. That's what it is.
I know it's our policy, and it's under policy to do that, but I brought it up before and I'll bring it up again. In this time of a pay freeze, it's a pay raise, from an outsider looking in. Somebody's getting a pay raise of $12,810. And I don't know if we should, if we can, look at that as a policy issue sometime down the road, but that's a big increase.
It's not a policy, it's contractual obligation you have via the employment agreements.
Well, maybe we can look at that to, in labor, to do it in the middle of the year or in a quarter. Maybe it should be as of the first of the next year following. I'll leave it at that.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christians?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docan?
Aye.
Fagerley?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
The next item, we looked at credit card service. And Clerk Halliday explained to us that various city departments have been receiving their benefits. Clerk Halliday explained to us that various city departments have been receiving requests for the use of debit and credit card payment options for a number of licenses, permits, and assessments. Pricing programs and offers from a few companies have been reviewed, with staff recommending the use of RevTrak out of Bloomington, Minnesota. Staff also addressed concerns about credit card transaction charges, reducing the revenue actually received, and informed us that as a government entity, a transaction fee may be charged to the customer to offset those costs. Other options to consider included raising fees and limiting credit or debit card payments to specific items only. Following discussion, and it was a lengthy discussion, there was a motion made, seconded and passed, and I would introduce a motion that, number one, that the city should pursue providing credit card services; two, direct staff to obtain pricing options from local banks; three, to charge a transaction fee to the customer; four, that types of items should not be limited, in other words, it could be everything that we do; and five, to choose price options for that service when we consider the proposals when they come back to us.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded so that the city should pursue providing credit card services, direct staff to obtain pricing options from local banks, to charge a transaction fee to the customer, that types of items should not be limited, and to choose price options when considering proposals. Discussion.
Councilman Christians?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In a couple of our businesses, we have to use credit cards also. We aren't allowed to charge a transaction fee, and I'm wondering, what will the transaction fee be? Is it going to be the same as or greater than what we're paying as a city for the credit card? Have you made that decision? Or we just set a transaction fee, and you can make it 5 percent, 6 percent, or whatever, and wouldn't it be easier to raise the cost of the fee by that percentage that we have to charge, pay the credit card company?
We talked about that, and perhaps Mr. Anderson should answer that. That was presented as an option.
We thought that might be unfair, because some people come in and want to pay cash. And in that particular case, they would be paying something extra. So we thought, in this time of fees, if they want to have that option, then they should pay the fee.
Don't get me wrong, I think it's a great option, because everybody's using plastic. I mean, and the city gets paid immediately. I mean, it's boom. But will the transaction fee, is it going to be the same as a credit card fee? Or that has to be decided yet?
No. I believe that'll be the final discussion point, when we bring all the bank options back, and we'll have to nail that down.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sure this question has been asked, but does it include, like, property taxes and so forth, that they can pay with their credit card?
Well, that's a county option, because it goes to the county, and I believe they've opened the door for that. Our discussion centered around special assessments, when we give a special assessments for $5,000 to $6,000, and they clearly want to use a credit card to receive the 1% or 2% rebate that they get from their company, and then turn around and pay the company right off to save the interest. So there's a loss, but that was discussed.
As a businessperson, I can see taking $250 off of a $5,000 bill and paying it to the credit card company. Am I right?
I don't think there's many cards out there that's not at a minimum a 1% rebate, so there's $50 in your pocket.
We had a motion and a second?
Yes, we did.
And this is a motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
The next item was the 2011 street preliminary budget. Staff presented the revised preliminary 2011 street improvement budget per bids received for street project number one. The other projects in this budget remain as engineers' estimates until such time as bids are let. Following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I would introduce a resolution adopting the preliminary 2011 street improvement budget as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to introduce a resolution adopting the preliminary 2011 street improvement budget as presented. Any discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
The next item was Wilmer Fabrication. Finance Director Ockens reviewed with us a 2005 program whereby the city received a grant from Deed in the amount of $400,000, which we in turn loaned to Wilmer Fabrication. Recently, Wilmer Fabrication paid off the balance of the loan, and the city is subsequently required to return the full $400,000 to Deed. Staff is working with Deed to determine whether the interest portion of the payments received from Wilmer Fabrication is to be used to establish a revolving loan fund, or if it needs, or if it can be used for other purposes. At this time, until we get further clarification, this is for information only. Seventh item were some reports. We looked at the December, or March 31st, first cash and investment portfolio, and several other reports. That was for information only. Final item has to do with the skateboard park lease. Clerk Halliday reported that Washington School property was recently sold to affiliated community medical centers, and that was on April 22nd, 2011. This nullifies the Wilmer Public School lease for the city's skateboard park. Affiliated Community Medical Center is willing to enter into a $1 lease with the city for one to three months to either store the equipment on the current site, or to continue its use as a skateboard park, and that would be pending some legal advice that they were still waiting for. Should they concur and have no insurance concerns with the city's coverage, staff is recommending entering into this lease. It was noted that community ed and rec staff was pursuing development of a new site. At this point, we have not yet heard back from affiliated if they are going to be willing to let us continue use as a skateboard park, or just let us use it for storage. So, following discussion, there was a motion made, seconded, and passed, and I'll introduce the motion to enter into a lease with affiliated community medical centers for $1 for either storage of equipment or use as a skateboard park, depending on ACMC's insurance decisions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to enter into a lease with affiliated community medical centers for $1 for either storage of equipment or use as a skateboard park, depending on ACMC insurance decisions. Discussion.
Just a motion. Simple motion, standard motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
That was the work of the committee, unless there's questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. And we go into the Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item was the bids that were received for the 2011 improvements on April 12th. And just for information, it was not including 19th Street that we talked about here tonight. The costs for the construction in 2011, in comparison to our 2010 construction season, the assessment rates have increased a little bit. It's a recommendation from our staff to sign the rate of $59.76 per foot for reconstruction. It was $55.88 last year. And the overlay would be at $25.46, which last year was $23.06. And the total for the project is $809,308.33 for the city's portion. And after discussion, there was a motion given, which is, I'm bringing a resolution to the council to declare the cost to be assessed in order of preparation of the assessment rule based on these figures.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to declare the cost to be assessed in order of preparation of the assessment rule. Any discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
Our police department has requested approval to apply for and accept a grant through our Minnesota Institute of Public Health for reimbursement for the cost of our alcohol compliance checks, and we would be reimbursed at the rate of $30 per compliance check, and we would anticipate that our police department would do two checks per year, per license, starting July 1st, 2011. And I would introduce a motion to authorize staff to apply for and accept grant funding from the Minnesota Institute of Public Health for alcohol compliance checks. That's a resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to authorize staff to apply for and accept grant funding from the Minnesota Institute of Public Health for alcohol compliance checks. Any discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Motion carries.
The next item was a request from our police department for approval to enter into an agreement for work-study program, an off-campus work-study program with Ridgewater College. It would start July of this year and run through the end of June of next year. It provides for 75% reimbursement of earned wages for qualified work-study participants that are attending the college, and the city would contribute the remaining 25%. And the police department has participated in this similar agreement in the past when employing either approved summer help or community service officers. So I would introduce a resolution to approve the agreement for off-campus work-study program and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agreement for an off-campus work-study program and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. Any discussion?
Roll call. Councilmember Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Docken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The motion carries.
Our police department has requested approval to apply for and accept a grant through our Minnesota Institute of Public Health for reimbursement for the cost of our alcohol compliance checks, and we would be reimbursed at the rate of $30 per compliance check, and we would anticipate that our police department would do two checks per year, per license, starting July 1st, 2011.
Dean Shouquist from Donahue and Associates was at our meeting, and he had a request for approval of furniture allowance, allowance number one, for shelving fixtures, furniture to accommodate the two office areas that are in the renovated administration building at the old wastewater treatment facility. And the total amount of the request is $2,643.41, which we had an allotment of $12,000. That leaves a balance of $9,356.59. Two offices are being used, are using existing furniture and file cabinets wherever possible. And the shelving is being purchased for records retention. I'll introduce a resolution to approve furniture allowance number one to project number 1017B and authorize the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. I'll wait for a second, then I want to say something.
Second.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Rhonda is here, Rhonda Ray. Did you want to speak about...
If you have questions.
Okay, but I thought there was...
Mr. Mayor, we, if, if you're asking her about the change order, then that's why she responded the way she did.
No, not about the change order.
You should go ahead with the change order. What we, what I've asked Rhonda to talk about is totally unrelated. It's something that we wanted to make the council aware of on our old wastewater treatment plant site.
Okay, all right. I was told it would be under number five, and it was...
Well, that was the only opportunity we had because there wasn't the standard monthly report.
Sure, okay. So both... Motion has been made and seconded to approve the furniture allowance number one to project number 1017B and author the city administrator to sign on behalf of the city. More discussion?
Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tablique.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docan.